I'd like to call to order, please, a regular meeting, Monday, August 25th. And I will repeat myself once more, there is a special meeting tonight immediately following the regular meeting. So would we please join Councilman Lortano on the Pledge of Allegiance and say standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we ask that you bless this state and you bless the citizens of this state. As we go to election day tomorrow, we ask that those elected are wise and given your guidance to make good choices for our citizens in the future. Dear Lord, please take care of those in California from the quake this weekend that have lost their homes or their businesses or are suffering. And dear Lord, we once again ask you to watch those that are serving us at home and abroad for their health and their safety and for the safety of their families. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Councilman Lortano. All right, we are all here tonight. I'm just checking to see, is Councilman Campbell, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Your voice comes so clear. You've been traveling quite a bit, but it's nice to hear your voice.
Thank you.
All right, we do not have any communication items tonight, which is really unusual. So, here we go. So now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. Are there's no speaker cards? Is there anybody in the audience that happens to be there tonight that wants to speak on an item? All right, with that, we're going to go right on down to consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.3 by title only?
Item 6.1, adopt resolution number 14-1658, authorizing the presiding judge and city attorney to execute an intergovernmental agreement, providing for the Superior Court of Arizona in Maricopa County to provide jury services to the Goodyear Municipal Court. Item 6.2, adopt resolution number 14-1659, renewing the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Goodyear and the Arizona Department of Public Safety to participate in the Arizona Vehicle Theft Task Force. Authorize the city manager to approve future intergovernmental agreements and execute any and all documents for agreement administration not to exceed five fiscal years ending June 30th, 2020. Item 6.3, approve the final plat for Pebble Creek Phase 2 Unit 62A, subdividing 16.36 acres into 47 single-family lots and six tracks generally located at the northwest corner of Clubhouse Drive and Cypress Street within the Pebble Creek Phase 2 Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations.
Thank you very much. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? I'm liking that. Then could I please have a motion and a second to approve 6.1 to 6.3?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we're to the business section. So the first item on the business section is a public hearing to consider a request to zone a 2.25 acre parcel located within the Palm Valley Phase 2 PAD. And I'm going to open the public meeting. And we're going to have a presentation by Steve Carecchia, Planner 3. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is a rezoning for 2.2 acres located within the Palm Valley Phase 2 PAD. It is part of a larger five-acre piece of property. They are located along Litchfield Road. Right there by Fire Station 183, the YMCA. General plan designates this property for residential and commercial use, residential on the north half, the commercial on the south half. Palm Valley PAD designates the property for medium-density residential, which is about 6 to 12 units per acre, and for church use. The request is for CO, commercial office. The church has plans to develop their facility basically on the north half. And what they would like to do is sell the remainder and develop that for commercial office. And with all three properties, they would share common driveways and common parking. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on June 19th. No one voiced any opposition to the project at that neighborhood meeting. Actually, there were three folks who did show up in support of the project. Planning Commission considered this item on July 16th. Notice for that project generated no opposition to this item before you. With that, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are recommending approval of this rezoning, subject to this one stipulation in the rezoning ordinance. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Staffs available for questions, as is the applicant as well.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Is there anyone in the audience would like to speak? Okay, I'm going to close the public meeting. And will the city clerk please read ordinance 14-1306 by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number 14-1306, rezoning 2.25 acres within the Palm Valley Phase 2 Final Planned Area Development from PAD Medium Density Residential Church to C-0 Commercial Office for property located at the northwest corner of Litchfield Road and Avalon Drive, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Holman. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor Pazillo?
Steve, I noticed you mentioned there would be shared parking. And I see the office space and I see the parking there. You feel comfortable, once the church is built, there'll be enough parking when the commercial business is going on? Or is it just because they won't be open on Sunday, so some of that overflow may go into that parking? Because a lot of that's going to be a building, so there's going to be limited parking on there. And I just want to make sure that staff is comfortable, there'll be enough parking for the church when that gets built.
Mayor, council members, the parking currently being shown is enough for the church, and they are, and they do have a surplus with the office buildings coming in. They will be of a size not to, given their size, they will not generate a huge parking demand. And given the different hours of uses, we don't see a problem with that being shared.
All right, thank you.
Well, I think it's great. I mean, I got so excited when I saw they're going to give half of this stuff to put on office building. What do we need? I mean, this is exciting to see this happen. And a great job on the cooperation between the church and the businesses. This is what we want to see more of as we go through the city. And we have spots where it can't be developed by whomever purchased the property. First, so this is, I'm very excited about this. So congratulations to both entities on that. Any other council discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pazillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we're down to 7.2. The second item is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Canyon Trails Phase 2 Planned Area Development. Open public meetings. Steve Carecchia, planners free, to present once more.
Oh, thank you again, Mayor. This is a PAD amendment to the Canyon Trails PAD, which was approved in 1999.
I'm sorry, will you say that again? What year was that?
1999.
Fifteen years ago. Yes, I wanted to hear that again.
Parcel G2 is that area outlined in red, consists of about 18.6 acres and 100 lots. The PAD amendment tonight would affect 97 of those undeveloped lots. There are three developed lots within Parcel G2. And with the PAD, all of this area is designated for single-family development. The lot width is 50 feet wide in Parcel G2. And with the setbacks established by the PAD, we have a 5-foot and a 10-foot side yard setback requirement with 15 feet between homes. And with a 50-foot wide lot, your house can be no wider than 35 feet. The applicant came to staff and they informed us that the smallest width product they had within the valley was 37 feet wide. With that, they were looking for a 2-foot reduction in the side yard setback. So before you tonight, we have step back requests for 5 feet and 8 feet with 13 feet between homes. We took that request to a neighborhood meeting on June 26th. To date, we have not received any opposition to this request. The applicant did provide staff with a letter of support from the HOA, as well as one of the homeowners, existing homeowners within Parcel G2. And this is a exhibit the applicant provided rendition of the housing product they're proposing in G2. And this exhibit shows the difference between the 15 feet and the 13 feet. Staff looked at this. PNC, Planning and Zoning Commission, reviewed this on July 16th. No opposition from the public has been voiced on this item. As such, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are recommending approval, subject to the three stipulations.
Steve, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, would anybody in the audience like to speak? Public hearing closed. Would the city clerk please read ordinance 14-1307 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 14-1307, amending the Canyon Trails Phase 2 Final Planned Area Development to modify the minimum side yard setbacks for 97 single-family residential lots within Canyon Trails Unit 4 West Parcel G2, generally located east of Citrus Road and south of Harrison Street, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Lortano and a second by Vice Mayor Pazillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
Steve, does this, do these changes alter at all the dwelling units per acre?
Mayor, council members, no, sir. They have 97 lots left and that's all. There were no changes to the subdivision.
So that, and this does not necessarily mean that it will apply in every circumstance, or will it? Is the minimum size that they offer now 37 instead of 35?
Mayor and council members, yes, that is what they have let staff know, 37 right now, given what the buyers are looking for in the size of a house. And specifically, in the amenities, I can provide it in a kitchen, that extra 2 feet provides what those buyers are looking for. So that's probably what we'll be seeing.
And will there be, I'm going to, I don't know what the official term for it is, I call it a model farm? Will there be model houses built to this configuration that people can see how far apart the houses are, as opposed to just buying a piece of dirt? Will they have some sort of visualization in knowing that? Is that, is a model like this going to be available for folks to see?
Mayor, council members, we had not discussed models. If I could defer that to applicant, they may be able to provide that information.
Okay. Well, I don't, yeah, I call it a model farm. It's just, you know, they're all together.
I'd like to have a model that someone could go through.
I know what you mean, Councilman. Mayor and council members, for your records, Carolyn Oberholzer with Bergen Frakes Smalley and Oberholzer, 4455 East Camelback. I'm here this evening on behalf of Polte Group and Centex Homes. And so thank you for hearing our case. Councilman Stip, they will be building models. I think it's important to understand that of all of the Polte homes that they, or the lots that Polte owns within this community, only 97 of them are 50 feet wide. The other lots are larger than 50 feet. The model complex is going to be built in Unit B3, which if you're able to go back to the layout, you can see it's just up the street from that. Those lots are 55 feet wide. These are the last remaining 50-foot wide lots in all of Parcel, or Unit 4 of Canyon Trails. So they will see this home built, but the model complex will be in Parcel B3, where the 15-foot separation can be maintained. It's just in these locations where that 2-feet deviation is necessary.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I absolutely agree with you. This is a needed model right now, the size of it and the homesite. I think it will sell and sell well. And that's what the market's looking at right now, not the big single families, so not the big homesite, so. Any other thing? Okay, now let's go ahead and have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's go to 7.3, is a preliminary plat for El Cidro, Parcels 1 through 5. And again, we're going to have Steve Carecchia, Planner 3, to present. Steve?
Well, thank you again, Mayor and council members. This item is a preliminary plat for El Cidro. And with El Cidro here, we have Lower Buckeye Road, Cotton Lane. MC85 is kind of the main streets around El Cidro. Through the, basically kind of the eastern edge of the main part of El Cidro, there is area there owned by-
Looking up, Steve, you're getting lower and lower. Thank you.
The area there running basically from east to west through the eastern side of El Cidro, that is area owned by the city, reserved for future freeway, the 303, running through that area. With this, the PAD was approved in 2007. There was also a preliminary plat for all of El Cidro approved in 2007. And the applicant actually got two final plats approved through the City Council in 2008, but they were never recorded with the county. With all of the changes with the freeway coming through and the flood control channel, there were some additional changes that the applicant needed to convey into this preliminary plat. So that resulted in changes to the preliminary plat through some of the engineering, kind of, there was a ripple. So they decided to come in, resubmit the preliminary plat for all of El Cidro. And that's why you have this item before you tonight. Basically, it's 328 acres divided into 1,260 lots, which is 63 lots less than the original preliminary plat that came through. Variety of lot size proposed within the PAD, and all of those are consistent with what was approved back in 2007. And this is basically the preliminary plat that they're providing. Again, a variety of lot sizes. So we have 50s through 55, 60s. And up in here, we have the smallest lot size of 45 feet, as well as over here, 45 This is the open space plan. This is the main open space area provided within El Cidro. This area here is about nine acres. It'll be a mix of amenities as well as retention. But through here, they're providing areas of turf, a couple sports courts, and Ramadas and play areas. They also have smaller parks dispersed throughout the community. And through here, this is a power line corridor. It'll improve with the trail system. And again, about 58 acres, almost 18% of the project will be provided in open space. The developers currently working on this preliminary plat also hope to come in with final plats. Prior to any final plats coming before the council, they will be required to enter into development agreement with the city covering infrastructure and service issues. Planning and Zoning Commission, they considered this item on July 16th. There was no opposition to the project voiced at the meeting. As such, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we do find it consistent with the PAD, with our development codes, and we are recommending approval, subject to the stipulations.
Good, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, could I have a motion and a second to rescind the February 25th, 2008 approvals for El Cidro Parcels 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, and 1F, final plats, in their entirety? And approve a request for a preliminary plat subdividing approximately 328.4 acres into 1,260 single-family residential lots for development known as El Cidro, generally located south of Lower Buckeye Road, along Cotton Lane, and along the proposed Loop 303 corridor, subject to stipulations. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Holman and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
Two questions. One is, because we've got residential lots that are going to back up to the 303 in this particular area proposed, is there requirement that folks purchasing in this area are notified of that? Is there a part of the original stipulations that we're in it?
Mayor, council members, it is. And again, when the final plats come through, that'll be a standard note and stipulation we will provide on all the final plats for those parcels.
Okay, on that note, is El Cidro responsible for sound walls? Or is that something that ADOT has to do when they put the roadway through?
Mayor, council members, what El Cidro will provide is 8-foot theme wall along that eastern boundary here.
Right.
With, at this point with the corridor being studied, or so far into the future, there was, was not a requirement for the developer to look at providing a sound wall, since we don't know what the freeway, what form it's going to take at this time.
Okay, so going down the, down the road, and I'm sorry for that, is that something, then, that ADOT, and maybe it's, maybe you won't be able to answer this, is that something that ADOT would have to do because there's homes there? This leg of the 303, we keep hoping is coming sooner rather than later, at least this segment of it. Matter of fact, I think we were having discussions about going to 85, MC85. So it may be closer than we think. So I'd just like to kind of know that before we approve this coming through. Anybody?
Mayor, council members, others can add more detail, but at this time, well, in the future, ADOT will perform their sound studies. They'll need to study this. At this point, there's nothing to study, but in the future, they will. And just like what you're seeing along I-10, if it's warranted, if it meets their thresholds, then they will deconstruct the noise walls.
Then it becomes their burden?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get cleared up. And then my second question, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Is, you said that this major park area was nine acres and some change, I think?
Yes, sir, it is nine acres.
Okay. Is that large enough for us to work with them on some park partnership to enhance our parks master plan? Off the top of my head, I don't remember what the minimum size quote-unquote park was, but 10 acres seems to be fairly large enough for us maybe to partner with them.
Can I, did you see, on one of your slides, you had that they were going to do tennis courts? Can you put that one up? Where did I just see that? On one of them you had-
Yeah, I just, that one.
That one. Volleyball courts, basketball court, so, yeah.
What I'm wondering is if, do we have an interest in working with them to get that to a point that we might be able to use some of the grass area for something else? I, I don't have the Parks Master Plan committed in my head, but is this a partnership opportunity for us that we may want to work on that?
Mayor, council, that's not been a discussion to date. I could defer that to other staff.
And is it too early? Is this not the right time? I don't know.
Mayor, Councilmember Stip, a couple of observations is, they are putting in the amenities for the localized area as we're looking at this. There's not parking sufficient for it to be a, you know, for a community park, per se. It is, it is a good size for this particular subdivision. I am looking back over at Nathan to see if he can, general guidelines as far as how we term these parks and how that may fit, and he might be able to answer your questions as well.
While Nathan's coming up, I guess I'm just driving at it from a, you know, we've got the Parks Master Plan. This is an opportunity for us to maybe have some influence in what goes in in that quote-unquote "local park" that might enhance what we've already talked about.
Councilmember Stip, Mayor Lord, members of the council, once we get organized to do so, this would be a great opportunity for us to look at future developments and how the master plan integrates into that. There are some things we would be looking for in the future. We're not there yet in terms of mobilizing that effort. But again, like Mr. Dalky mentioned, we'd be looking for parking, a development of this size, minimum of five acres high and dry, with some parking amenities and some other minimal standards. But we're not to that mobilization effort yet at this time.
Would we be closer when this comes to final plat? And can we make adjustments at that point?
It looks like it would take some homes out of the area.
I would say we're probably about a good six months.
I think that would, you know, you'd have to take homes away in order to make that happen.
Or give up some other green space, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Osborne?
Actually, on Bill's spot there, and I understand it's about being proactive. And we have parks within our city right now that have thought were great, and they have great amenities, but the way they were structured within the community, the parking was an issue. And then it became that all the neighbors were upset because people came to use that park and were parking on their road, on their streets. And then they were upset about that because people were coming from other areas to use that great park. And so that's why it's just a proactive look at how this is. And I think that just, you know, working with the park staff and saying, you know, let us help you discover the issues we've had over the last 10 years of building parks, or 15 years, and seeing where some of these things have come into play, you know? Because we've had some of those situations currently. And so I would appreciate that. But I would like to say to the applicant, thank you, Nathan. Thank you for all your patience over all these years. I went back through a lot of history, reading over El Cidro. And I know that I was a Planning and Zoning Commissioner to the Chairman of the Commission, to going on council, looking at this over and over and over again. I appreciate your patience. I know that many things that has come with this development wasn't something that you wanted to have. It's not something I prefer. I don't prefer houses against a freeway. That's what, I just don't. But it's one of those ugly transportation corridors that we're going to need. And I appreciate you working with the city and doing that. The one thing that I, that I will say, and I appreciate Councilmember Stip's questions regarding the sound wall. These homes may or may not be there before the full freeway is in. And I think proactively, again, if, when we look at the final plats for these subdivisions, whether they're in phases or however they come, whether we get to see them as a council or only staff, I would prefer that the homes in this general vicinity of that freeway system have sound windows, have proactive items within those homes themselves, because it may be another 10 years before a sound wall is built and put up. Let's think about the people that live in these areas. And, you know, we can't do anything about the pollution that will come with homes being next to those freeways, but there are things that we can do to help mitigate some of that sound beyond just a big ugly wall. And, you know, landscaping things, just all those- And, you know, landscaping things, just all those, those types of things that we're not necessarily looking right here as it being a preliminary plat, but in the final stages, those are things that I would like you all to look at. But again, thank you for your patience, and I appreciate that you've hung on with Goodyear this long.
Anybody else? Okay, I, I also, it seems to me we've talked about this area for an awfully long time. I've sat down with some of the developers a long time ago, spoke about this, and they were in a dilemma, council, about 303. You can't imagine how long it's been to finally get an idea that maybe that's where the 303 is going to be. These people had a great investment, and, and really was hard to move forward with a plat because of, because where it was going to go, so I think they've done a great job on the green space. I really like the big area where the Ramada and volleyball and basketball is, that's great. And as far as living next to a freeway, I don't take offense to that, because it's, it's the way we are in the United States, you have the freedom of buying where you want to buy, and there are so many people, we have to think, there are so many people to think of convenience and time travel, and so those are the things that are important to these people, so they want that convenience. They don't want to be four blocks off of where the, the highway is going to be where they're, and I will say, I don't think the walls are ugly. I think ADOT tries, and I'm hoping funds will be a little bit stronger, maybe the design will be a little bit more on the walls, but they're necessary, and I, and I think they'll be there, they were there for I-10. We talk about it at MAG, I don't have any hesitation that we won't have those walls up there, and hopefully they'll, we'll have some say-so in the design of those walls, whether they're going to continue the same ones they've done on I-10. So anyway, good on ya. I can't believe this is happening, I'm happy about it, so let's go on and let's vote for this. So, any others? Council discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, let's go to 7.4, is to consider the approving fiscal year 2014-15 pavement management projects. Does that sound familiar? Steve Sevright, Streets and Traffic Superintendent, to present. Steve? Ron? Sorry about that.
Looking for my cousin.
You're wondering what I said?
Mayor, council members, I'd like to present our 14-15 projects. We did them through this narrow that you've seen before, that we worked with our consultant on. Engineering staff, Luke, Brian, and I have narrowed down a list for our 14-15 projects, and today, the requested action that we're list, we're asking for is engineering, engineering staff has developed, are requesting council to approve budget expenditure of about $650,000 for fall 2014 pavement management projects. This map illustrates all the projects that we're looking at for 2014-15. Some of these will be done in the fall. As you see, the ones in yellow and gold are projects that we're most going to bring back into the spring and ask for approval for. Those are going to be our micro and slurry seals. Our micro seals, as you see, are in yellow, and they concentrate more on the collectors and arterials, and the slurry seals are in gold. And then our high-density mineral bonds are more in green, and to get a better look at the fall 2014 projects, that's, that kind of separates them all out there. So those are the ones that we're looking for approval for, for this fall, and those are the neighborhoods that we're concentrating on. This is an example notification that our contractor passes out to the residents and to businesses, and also our schools, post offices, and to our emergency staff to ensure that they know what's going on. It gives them a little detailed look at what the project is, how long it's going to last, and what they're going to be doing. They also, on the reverse side, oops, there we go, they provide them a list, and they tell them exactly what roads are going to be closed and when, and how long they will be closed, and they tell them where to park, so it gives them a better idea. The first part of the project for the high-density mineral bond is the contractor will get in there, and he seals all the cracks, cleans the road, and then he covers up any monuments, manholes, valves, to protect them from the sealant, after which he applies the sealant. In this picture, you can see, it's a two-part process. On the bottom of the screen there, it's, it's actually, he's applying the second coat, that is the first coat of the high-density mineral bond that he's applying at that time. And then, once they're done with the application, they do their cleanup, and then he opened the road, once the road is cured. And at this time, I'll open it for any questions or discussion.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak? All right, could I please have a motion a second to approve the budgeted expenditure of $650,000 to complete high-density mineral bond pavement preservation treatments in the neighborhood? Do I hear a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Loretano, and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo, open for council discussion. Councilman Loretano.
I am so excited you're doing this for some of our streets. I know they're crumbling up in parts of Estrella, I mean, pretty bad, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have one question, though. We have several streets that are actually cul-de-sacs, and there's only one way in, in and out. I mean, there's no other way, so I'm not quite sure how you're going to close the street, because in a lot of the strays, they just dead-end, and there's nothing but desert or washes.
Mayor Lord, Councilman Loretano, we, the contractor works with everybody, and there's, there's a lot of different scenarios in here, and, and what me and Brian did is, we actually, we were skeptical also. We, we wanted to find out how the contractor was going to handle these areas. So, when they, when they close off a lot of these roads, they, they, they work with the residents, they have golf carts to bring people in and out, they close them off systematically to make sure that these people aren't walking too far to get to their vehicles, and it just, they, it just worked out really easy the way they did it. We didn't, they didn't have, we polled over six cities, and they didn't have a lot of complaints, and we're, we're definitely going to meet with the contractor, we're going to meet with all of the HOAs and try to, we're working with Christina Plant, and, and definitely going to get the word out. So, if there's, there's going to be def, a lot of, like I said, this is a draft, there's going to be a lot of contact information on there for people to call, so if, if there's anything that they need, they can call that number, and we can get a response.
And I appreciate that, especially because, like I said, we have a lot of cul-de-sacs that just dead-end, that's kind of how they built the community, and talking to the HOA is good, too, so we don't get a bunch of residents who get angry letters from the HOA for parking on the street while we're doing this.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, then let's vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So let's go to 7.5, to consider approving the prepayment agreement between the City of Goodyear and Sun NP. Sarah Chilton, Assistant City Attorney, to present. Sarah?
Mayor, council members, I'm going to be presenting the next two items on the agenda tonight, but these two items are also related to the following two items, so I'm going to give you some background history to put these in, in perspective. We've had a development agreement in place with Sun NP for a number of years, and Sun NP's property, which includes these two lots here, and then property adjacent to, well, over here, is covered by the City Center Air Park Agreement, and those, that property is adjacent to part of the property upon which the spring training facility was built. Down here on this property is the, what's called the Wood Corporate Campus, and that's where the practice facilities are built, and then above here is where you have, right here, where you have the actual stadium itself. So, we have to go back to the time where we're developing the spring training facility, and also where the private developer at that time, the private property owner, was developing the site in anticipation of private development coming in, and the private development, developer was to put in all of the infrastructure, where they, they intended to put in all of the infrastructure to have pad-ready sites. So they controlled the construction of the infrastructure improvements at that time, and there was a lot going on out there. They did a number of things, for instance, we had an existing portion of a roadway for Lower Buckeye. City, under the City Center Development Agreement, was required to mill and overlay it, and then Sun NP was going to put in other improvements adjacent to its property when it developed. The private developer ripped it out and destroyed all of the connections, utility, the then-existing utility connections. So, the result of that was an agreement with the private developer to rebuild that road and to construct, and, and at that point, they agreed also to install utility improvements that would support these lots down here. So we call that the Lower Buckeye Parkway Agreement. There were other improvements, other, other things that had to have been done during, during this time with the private developer. They were providing for drainage, and they were digging a drainage channel between, on the back of these lots here, I think it's right here, but I guess they encroached on some of city, of the city center property, so the private developer said, hey, let us trade into this, we'll give you the additional property you need for the drainage, you install the, there's a pipe to get drainage down, you install the pipe, you know, you construct the channel large enough to take our drainage from these three lots here, this one, this one, well, there's three lots, you can see it on the, on the development agreement, for three of the lots, and also you install a box culvert, and we'll pay for the box culvert that has to have been, that had to have been installed. So there's all kinds of these side agreements. The city was also engaged in some work in this area as well for the ballpark project. We entered into an agreement for the construction of this portion of Bullard Avenue, where Sun NP also had some responsibility for. There was actually an agreement in place for that one, but in addition to doing that one, we constructed improvements all the way down to here, and the agreement did not cover those, those, those improvements, so there's.
Sarah, so it didn't cover F? Is that where it is, right next to the?
The participation agreement that came down here only stopped here.
Where the yellow stopped.
But we actually installed this little segment H. We installed a temporary interim condition, a low-flow crossing here, which is G, and then we installed F.
Okay.
So there's a lot going on. We had to excavate the Bullard Wash adjacent to the Sun NP property, so we had an agreement with Sun NP where they allowed us to do that, and under the development agreement, they were entitled to nine months' notice. There was things that we just couldn't make in order to accommodate the timing for the completion of the spring training facility, so we had a separate agreement for that. Then, you know, as you know, the private developers filed for bankruptcy, the city ended up taking over the project. The city completed a lot of the work that had been agreed to between the private developer and Sun NP, and there was some reimbursements owed for improvements under this Lower Buckeye Parkway project. And then, of course, the only thing we hadn't completed at this point was the box culvert that had to have been installed to complete the drainage, and until that was done, we still didn't have the drainage channel that we're actually draining into. We'd, as part of what we did, we expanded the drainage channel, we, you know, pursuant to that kind of stormwater agreement, verbal agreement that, you know, existed between the private developer and Sun NP, but we still had to do the box culvert. So, there were disputes over who was entitled to the reimbursements. We actually used infrastructure funds, and I believe there were demands made on Sun NP that they were entitled to those monies. You know, we're saying, look, we're entitled to those monies because we're going to complete the infrastructure improvements. So as part of the MNI settlement, the settlement with MNI, the city agreed to complete Bullard Avenue improvements, and essentially, they go here, and then they curve down, and then they connect into Estrella Parkway. But we said, you know, in order for this to have, improve the value of the Wood Corporate Campus, we have to have these improvements in here, in this little section. So the settlement agreement required us with MNI to complete that section as well, and then we are obligated to construct the Estrella improvements along the Wood Corporate Campus. However, staff was looking at this, and although the completion of this segment N on Estrella Parkway is, was to be done by Sun NP when they developed the adjacent property, who knew what that was going to happen? We didn't know if it would interfere with spring training, you know, when that came in, and it just didn't make sense not to complete out that, complete out that project. So staff has been working with Sun NP, well, after the settlement and agreement was, was done, we did that in 2011, but it didn't become effective until the bankruptcy was finalized, so it sat around for a while before it was finalized. So staff has been working with Sun NP on trying to reconcile everything that's been done out there on this property that affected the existing development agreement, because a lot of what was done was different than what was contemplated in the development agreement. So we have all of these reimbursements that we needed to do, and we also had all of these improvements that didn't quite jive with what the, what the development agreement, the obligations on the development agreement. So we've been working through this. We have also been in the process of getting the roadways designed, so we have the Bullard Avenue design done, and the Estrella design done, and the box culvert was part of the Bullard Avenue improvements, it'll be installed as part of that. And it took quite some time, I guess, to complete the design because we're having some issues with APS. It's been completed, so once that was done, then it became, there's a sense of urgency to complete, complete these agreements so that we can get everything resolved, and we can get the funding necessary to pay for the completion of Bullard Avenue and Estrella Parkway. So that's kind of the background of where all this came from, and kind of the sense of urgency. So the first agreement is the prepayment agreement, and I guess the formal name is the Segment E, Segment N, Box Culvert Prepayment Agreement, and it's, we're asking for the adoption of a resolution that approves and authorizes the execution of the prepayment agreement, and authorizes us to accept the dedication of the drainage channel, which will be dedicated after the box culvert improvements are completed, and the dedication of a temporary license so that we can actually, you know, legally go onto Sun NP's property and do the work that we need to do. And then, as part of that, we would be granting Sun NP an easement, a drainage easement, to drain into that channel from the two lots, or the three lots that, you know, we had agreed upon. So that's a brief summary of what that agreement does, and essentially, what will happen is Sun NP will pay for the costs that they're required to pay under the development agreement for this Segment E, and they'll pay for the entire cost of this Segment N, that's fully their responsibility, and they'll pay what they had agreed to pay with the prior, prior developer, the one-third of the cost of the box culvert. And then the prepayment agreement basically modifies the development agreement to reflect the satisfaction of the obligations with respect to those improvements. That is pretty much, oh, and then finally, the resolution also authorizes the transfer, a budget transfer, because funds come in, they come into a developer contribution, but we need to get the funds into an account to fund the Markham contract, which is, you'll be hearing, I think it's the second to the last item on the agenda tonight. So those funds are needed to actually complete the, complete the improvements there.
Great. And that's, would you just give them a 7.5 and 7.6 presentation?
A lot of it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, would the city clerk please read? All right, would the city clerk please read Resolution 14-1660 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 14-1660, approving and authorizing execution of Segment E, Segment N, Box Culvert Prepayment Agreement between the City of Goodyear and Sun MP Investment Properties LLC Prepayment Agreement Regarding Reimbursements for the Construction of Infrastructure Improvements, Approving and Authorizing Acceptance and Execution of Special Warranty Deed with Reservation of Right to Drain Storm Water and Tail Water, Approving Grant of Easement and Authorizing Execution of Storm Water Drainage Easement Agreement, Approving and Authorizing Acceptance and Execution of Non-Exclusive Temporary License to Enter, Authorizing Budget Transfers, Providing Authorization for Correction of Scrivener's Errors and Non-Substantive Changes to Documents, Providing Authorization and Direction to Carry Out Intent of Resolution and Prepayment Agreement and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion and a second, please, on 7.5?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Loretano, open for council discussion. Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Just a general question, the money, how this gets funded? The way I read it, it's coming in from Sun MP, because you need to make a budget transfer so you can pay the contractor. How does all, all that timing work with the contract to make sure we have the money to pay the contractor?
Both, both agreements, the prepayment agreement and the next amendment one, require that the payments be paid within five days of the date the agreement is executed. We have the executed agreements from Sun MP, so we'll be circulating them tomorrow, and then it would be due within five business days of the date that we notify them, and we'll send them an email and a, and a PDF of the document showing that it's been executed. So it would be due, due within five days of that. You know, I guess there's some concern, we can talk about the Markham contract, about entering into the contracts before we have the funding in hand, but it's what comes first, the chicken or the egg. I know that we have been working with Sun MP, they requested, I think it's been almost two weeks ago, copies of invoices so they could have everything in place and have the funding available. My understanding is that there's two part, there's, it's a partnership, so they have half the money already locally, and a commitment to have the rest of it by, and, you know, transferred to them by the 28th, so I don't think there'll be any trouble meeting the five-day, five-business days.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a general comment.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. Sarah, I just have to say, over all these years, you know, I have to give you some kudos and props, because you've had to really understand years' worth of all the development and all the contracts and the negotiating, and really protecting the city, and I thank you for that. I know it's your job, but I think it's sometimes nice to hear that, you know, you really have done a good job, and I appreciate that. And I hope that all of this that we're looking at, again, is, is maybe spurring something around these areas, so thank you, Sarah.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, we need to get this type of work done, so that when the opportunity does come, we can, and it's nice to see Sun MP at the table. So it's nice to see those words again, it gives me some hope for development of that ballpark. So next thing we know, maybe you'll build something on that, and that'd be great, and put a smile on this council. So with that, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
So we'll go on to the next one, which is the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for the City Center Air Park. Sarah's already given the presentation, nothing else you want to add to that, Sarah, is that correct?
No, not really. I mean, it's collecting money for work that we've already done, it's also due within five days, and it's really basically conforming the development agreement to what's been done, and I think it's pretty well laid out in the, in the staff presentation, unless you have questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak? Will the city clerk please read Resolution 14-1661 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 14-1661, approving and authorizing execution of First Amendment to Development Agreement for City Center Air Park. Amendment One, approving and authorizing acceptance and execution of three special warranty deeds for portions of Bullard Wash, authorizing budget transfers, providing authorization for correction of Scrivener's errors and non-substantive changes to documents, providing authorization and direction to carry out intent of resolution, and Amendment One, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Osborne, open for council discussion. I think we kind of pre, pre-discussed that a little bit, guys. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Sarah. I will go to 7.7, a business item to consider approving a contract for Bullard Avenue and Estrella Parkway Infrastructure Improvements. Hello, Regis Reed, project managers, nice to see you back.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor, I'll try not to reiterate too much what Sarah covered for you already, and I do also want to reflect Councilmember Osborne's comments, it was a taunting task that both Sarah and Linda Beals, our real estate coordinator, went through with Sun MP. They did a great job getting these before you and getting a vote on it, thank them. What I'm here to speak to you about is actually the construction of the Bullard Avenue and Estrella Parkway Infrastructure Improvements on the agenda, and I just give you a little bit of background, again, I won't bore you with the things Sarah covered already, the purpose for my being here, and to basically get into a little more of the design elements for Bullard Avenue and Estrella Parkway, and provide you with a timeline. A little background, again, as Sarah spoke earlier, it began back in 2006, when we got approval for a memorandum to enter into a development agreement for some land purchases to develop a spring training facility here in the City of Goodyear. Part of this project was the infrastructure, and what I'm here for, before you this evening is the Bullard Avenue, Estrella Parkway improvements, which will complete the infrastructure around that. In order to get there, Sarah entered into an agreement with MNI for the settlement agreement and provided funds for this project. Project is also referenced in a short-term recommendation in the 2014 Transportation Master Plan, which approves the north-south access and defines a truck route. The project was competitively bid in June of this year, and we received bids in July 1st, with Markham Construction being the Lotus qualified bidder. The purpose tonight is to approve, approve a budget expenditure, budgeted capital expenditure of $4.9 million for that contract. Sorry about that, my clicker's not working, I'm having to use the mouse roller. Part of the design elements for Bullard Avenue, you can see highlighted in red there, will create a signalized intersection at the intersection of Bullard and Estrella Parkway, down in the south part of the screen, lowest part of the screen, will build four lanes with raised landscape medium and streetlights, create sidewalks and landscaping on the west side of that road, and landscaping on the east side of the road, and of course, all the dry and wet utilities associated with this project for the connectivity of, to weather utilities and future development. Estrella Parkway design elements will be an additional northbound third lane with all the required right-turn lanes, side, finishing the sidewalk and landscaping on the east side of the road, and will be building a dry utility duck bank to underground the 12KV line and all the other overhead lines that are currently running alongside that property on the east side. Project timelines, of course, with the approval this evening, we'll be issuing a notice of proceed to the contractor on August 27th of this week, September 2nd, they plan on beginning their mobilization, and we will be substantially complete with the project just before spring training starts on February 25th of 2015, and open those roadways to the public by March 31st of that same year, we'll have all the completed punch list completes, and the final will be, the project will be finally accepted. This time, if you have any questions or discussions?
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, could I please have a motion and a second to approve a budgeted expenditure exceeding $500,000 to construct project number SD 1201, Bullard Avenue and Estrella Parkway Infrastructure Improvements. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Loretano and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo, open for council discussion. Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Just a general, Regis, the timeline that the road be open is 25th, when's the first day of spring training?
The pitchers and catchers show up February 12th, and I'm really not sure what the schedule is, usually it's right at the end of March.
February, oh, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry, February, usually the 20, 27, 28. I haven't seen this year's calendar.
Yeah, it just looks like a pretty tight schedule there to, to get that, yeah.
Who just, just talked to us, Regis, he gets things done on time when he's working.
I know, so, yeah. We don't have a much.
Councilman Pizzillo, yeah, it is a tight schedule, and, and we will concentrate our efforts on Estrella Parkway to begin with, that's the most important, to get that open and through, if, if we have some hiccups along the way, Bullard Avenue is not so critical, but we anticipate, working with contractor already and discussing a timeline, we will be able to make those dates.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Well, I'm excited, because I think that's going to help the traffic going to the games, and, and of course, the aesthetic look of it all is going to be much nicer, so, very, very good. So, all right, guys, let's, I've had a motion, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, you just get back and start that road.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to 7.8, to consider the abandonment of a portion of Bullard Avenue south of Yuma Road due to realignment of the roadway. Linda Beals, Real Estate Coordinator, to present. Linda?
Yes, I have, get that straight, okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I saved, I guess, mine for last tonight, but I'm here to present the abandonment of what we call the section line alignment for Bullard Avenue. You can see on here that they realigned Bullard Avenue, which you've seen several times tonight, to go along this route. That occurred because if you look, the section line, that, or the section line that comes along Bullard Avenue would take you right into the airport, so that wouldn't work. So they changed it and realigned it, as we're going to finish the construction, hopefully in the next few months, to take it back out onto Estrella around the airport. Back in around, well, initially back in the year 2000, Sun MP came in when they knew they were going to realign this, and asked for the city to abandon that right-of-way, the section line portion. That kind of drug out, for whatever reason, didn't get done. So when they came in for their amendment back in, and, and they got their original development agreement, the first, the, the first portion of the development agreement before the amendment, back in 2006, one of the items in that development agreement is that the city would continue processing the abandonment application, and that we would support that application. Well, we're finally here, they dedicated their portion of Bullard Avenue, they completed that back in 2009, the, for the new alignment, and we're finally here tonight to ask for the approval of the abandonment for the section line portion to meet the commitments that we made a number of years ago.
Thank you, Linda, appreciate the presentation. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Will the city clerk please read Resolution 14-1662 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 14-1662, declaring a portion of the public right-of-way for portion of Old Bullard Avenue south of Yuma Road to be unnecessary for a public roadway, finding a portion of Old Bullard Avenue necessary for a public, public utility easement, authorizing the exchange of Old Bullard Avenue, subject to a reservation for a public utility easement for the realigned Bullard Avenue, authorizing execution of a quickclaim deed to effectuate exchange and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Holman, a second by Councilman Stip, open for council discussion. Well, it's really good that we are now doing this. It took us a little time, but we're here.
We're here.
Yeah, it's, it's good news. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. And Wally, I know you're anxious to hang up the phone, I just want to thank you for hanging on there tonight.
Well, thank you.
All right. All right, so let's go to information items. Does council have anything they want to talk about tonight? Councilman Loretano?
I will be very brief, because I know several of us attended the League of Cities, but I want to congratulate the chief for his presentation and his staff.
It was a nice presentation.
I, I mean, that was very impressive, what they're doing, and just very briefly, they're putting officers, having them offices in the schools, in the grade schools, for safety, security, and community outreach. So I just, I want to say thank you. That was the best part of the conference, see, our city represented so well.
It really was, I, I have to say ditto to that, it was a great presentation, and people were commenting, well, they have been commenting, they've seen this in the, on the newsreel, and they've seen it in the newsreel. You haven't heard that in a long time. Where'd that come from?
I wasn't going to say anything.
He's going to ask, what's a newsreel?
On the TV.
Oh, wow. It happens, but it was, it was just great, so. Any, any others? All right, city manager?
Nothing tonight, Mayor and Council.
Okay, all right, well, with that, I'll just tell you, the next meeting will be on September 8th, I'm sorry, what? Oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
I have an inquiry, I assume this is the time for that. I never, I'm never sure if they come together or they go from there. I had the pleasure today of driving the 303 ramps that opened, took it all the way to Indian School, and when I got off at Indian School, I noticed that it is disgusting. There are three-foot-tall weeds, it looks like an absolute ghost town out there, it is really not a good representation of our city. I'm fairly certain it's all ADOT's responsibility, but that intersection, when you get off there, you look like you're in the middle of someplace that is not representative of our city. So I'd like someone to contact ADOT and get that, get that taken care of, it, it's really not good at all, thank you.
Great observation, thank you, Bill, appreciate that. Somehow, nobody gets kind of out to that Indian School there, I think Wally had comments about Indian School at one time, so. Okay, city manager, is there anything that you'd like to talk about?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to go into our special meeting, you'll have time for a little break, and there's some food in